Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Today is November 10th, 2020. It's approximately 9:25 PM. I called the meeting to order. It's a virtual meeting. It's being conducted by Zoom, given our pandemic situation. And just for the record, I've asked the Borough Clerk, as I've always asked for control of the Zoom meeting, and she refuses to hand that over to me. And that's a whole nother issue, which I won't belabor the public with. At this point, I'd like to...
Mayor, you keep blaming me. Why don't you ask the governing body that voted on it? I have nothing to do with it. So if you're going to say something, please clarify.
Okay, so under New Jersey law, NJSA 4860-5, I chair the meetings, I control the meetings, but I'm not given that control by the clerk.
By the governing body.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To have everyone observe a moment of silence for two residents who recently passed away. One is Connie Campbell. She had been the deputy court clerk for many years here in Englewood. And for Donald McDermott, who passed away also. And Mr. McDermott was a silver medalist in the 500-meter speed skating at the Olympic Games in Oslo in 1952. And he died recently. And my condolences go out to his wife, Annalise, and both of their families. If we have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And as we observe a moment of silence for the two residents who passed away, we've had five residents pass away due to COVID complications. And we also mourn their loss. We've had, in town, a total and two COVID-positive cases historically, according to our health officials. According to the county, we've had 88. So it's either 102 or 88, depending on whose numbers you go by. Currently, in the season four number for us, there's 13 active cases, with the last being diagnosed today. So we've seen an uptick in COVID cases. So I asked everyone, as you're going around town and using the parks, please use as much social distancing as possible, wear a face mask in the park. And there's been hand sanitizer stations installed throughout the park, and they're foot-operated, so you don't have to actually use your hands, which is a real nice feature of those. Today, we celebrated and we observed Veterans Day here in town in front of the firehouse this morning at 11 o'clock. We observed it today because the borough is closed tomorrow, and it was going to work better with our employees. We were very fortunate in that we were joined by a resident, Pastor Claude Hubbard, who's not only a pastor, but also a graduate of the Naval Academy and served as a Marine in various engagements on behalf of the United States Marine Corps. He gave us a wonderful talk, and I wish more people were there. I think you could see it on Facebook Live. It's really worth listening to Pastor Claude. He told us a story about him and his friends. They were young men at the time in Beirut. And parts of it, you couldn't tell. We were all smiling because we had face masks on, but the very solemn and sad parts, you could actually see tears. So thank you to Pastor Hubbard. He's done a great job, and we're very fortunate to have him. Speaking of the Marine Corps, today, we also observed the 245th birthday of the Marine Corps, which is a tradition. And we're there with Pastor Hubbard. And also, there are two members of our police department who are Marines, Lieutenant Colin Ford and Officer Joseph Farrelly. So we observed the US Marine Corps birthday. Because of the pandemic, we did not have a birthday cake, but that is also a tradition. Hopefully, we can get back to next year. And just because we're going to lose people during this meeting, I just want to wish our Indian community a happy Diwali. I believe it's this Saturday, the 14th. And to everyone here, also a happy Thanksgiving at the end of this month. So with that said, I'd like to have a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Sparrow?
Here.
Sabari? You're...
Oh?
Here.
Song?
Here.
Aversa?
Here.
Woo?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please go to the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. During time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a proclamation that I had written on behalf of the Armenian community that was under siege in the Artsoft Republic. And that'll be available on our website. The clerk will post that for everybody to read. Next item is the Borough Charity Project. This is the Office of Concerned Food Pantry at St. Seamus Church in Englewood. We, the community, have been donating nonperishable food items to the food pantry there, and also other donations. So please continue to support them. They've actually fed over 1,000 families last week. The need is great. And we have, in Englewood Cliffs, the ability to help them, and we should, especially during this month of Thanksgiving. We all received Department head reports. Are there any council members who have questions regarding anything on those reports? No? Okay. We've also had correspondence. It should have been put on here, but there was a letter I received from the Palisade Interstate Park Commission. You know, I've been trying to reach out to them and to see Nick Hudson regarding the affordable housing, I guess developments and development in terms of how it threatens the view shed. They didn't really express any interest in it before this letter, although I did speak to people and see Nick Hudson and warned them that it's a slippery slope when you run out of space to build horizontally. There's only one direction to go, and that's vertically. So, you know, given what New Jersey's doing and the way it's being administered in terms of affordable housing, you probably have a ruined view shed within several years, if not sooner, given the cast of characters that are involved and their ability to get just about anything that they want done in terms of building affordable housing.
I think that letter was addressed to Mary Beth, actually, and not to you, Mayor.
Well, actually, I have a letter addressed to me, Ms. Sabari. So thank you. I'm not sure...
None of us received that letter.
I'm not sure if you get my mail also. I'm actually asking the Borough Clerk to circulate it for you. I think probably what the... Let me just finish. Probably the best thing that, given the way New Jersey is misadministered, given the way the judges have crept into the role of executives and their ability to just about ignore every applicable law, I think the best thing for the Palisade Interstate Park Commission would be to do a joint venture with the National Park Service and get some federal law protecting the view shed, as opposed to just relying on New Jersey laws, which what we've seen as New Jersey judges don't like to enforce very much. So that's my suggestion, and I'll talk to them about it. The minutes that have been provided for approval, a great issue with the closed session minutes, as I told the clerk in an email today. You're all welcome to over it. The minutes are supposed to reflect reality and report on what happened at a meeting. They are not to be curated to create a false light of who's speaking. And that's kind of like what I reviewed here. So I edited those. I objected these minutes, but I'm going to turn it over to the council now to permit them to do as they wish, because votes matter, right? So you guys get to vote to approve them. I did edit them, and I expected my edits to be made. Ms. Duffy, did you make those edits?
No, Mayor. Some of the statements that you made, with all due respect, were not made in closed session.
Okay, well, you know what? I did make those statements, and you didn't report them. So you, you know...
I think we should just take a vote, because I think...
You're free to curate in life, but not in your public office, okay? You have to report as a clerk.
Okay, so are we voting on the minutes now?
If you want to make a motion, you're free to do so.
Yes. Motion to vote on the minutes.
You have to be most...
Yeah, I understand that.
Motion for seven, eight, July, August 2020, August 24th, 2020, September 9th, 2020, and October 14, 2020.
As written.
As written. I need a moment and then a second.
I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Hold on, I'm letting people into the meeting. Councilperson Sparrow?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Councilman Woo?
Out of all.
Point of order, Mayor?
Just Mr. Aversa.
I'd like to make a motion to limit the public, when they get time to speak, to two minutes tonight, since most of them spoke already, and it's already late.
We only had four people or five people speak.
I know, and they spoke for 40 minutes. So I make a motion to limit them to two minutes. The council can second it or not.
78 people.
The motion's on the floor.
78 people are on, so five people is not most.
I'll second it.
It's simple math, Ed.
Councilperson Sparrow?
No.
Sabari? Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
Councilman Aversa, if you would like to keep time, because I'm not able to do so.
Okay, no, I know.
Board Administrator, I'd also like you to cut the mics at two minutes, please. I will let you know when the two minutes is up. Thank you.
And don't let that be your leaving testimony and tribute of being a council member, that you're cutting people...
Well, that would be my decision, Mario. If people don't like it, that's fine.
Do you have anything else to do tonight other than listen to our public that voted us all into office? I think it's important to not limit people.
It's okay. I will listen to them for two minutes. More than that, I don't think is necessary, so...
Look, you're very chatty tonight, but let me finish, and you can have the floor. I don't think it's proper to limit the public when they have things to say. And that's probably the big difference between the two of us.
Okay, well, thank you for your opinion, Mario. But we've, I made the motion, the council approved it, it goes on.
Well, I also don't think you should be interrupting people, Mr. Aversa. Okay? So that's the big difference.
Oh, you're done?
Yes.
All right, we need a motion to open.
Ms. Duffy, wait, Mr. Aversa. Listen, you're being rude now, okay? I'm in the middle of a statement. That's the big difference between us, Ed. You want to limit people, you want to limit democracy, you want to limit free speech. I don't. I want everybody to talk.
Are you talking to me, Mario?
Okay. Okay, so any member of the public? We need to have a motion to open the republic.
Yes, correct.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and you're free to yield to each other time, so you could go...
No, you're not. That's not true, Mario. You know the rules.
Your little resolution didn't have anything about that. So I yield my time to whoever wants it.
Okay, so do I need to make another motion?
Two minutes?
So I make a motion.
Already in public.
I make a motion that no yielding of time. Anyone second that?
Don't move.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard?
Well, Mario, there's a, excuse me, Mario, there's a motion and a vote on the floor. We need to take that, thank you.
We're already in public portion, you can't...
No, Mario, sorry. You opened your mouth, now you got to suffer the consequences.
You have to follow proper...
Does that please take a roll call?
What is this motion for?
The motion is that no... Thank you.
Okay.
Two minutes, no yielding of time. Thank you.
Councilperson Sparrow? Sabari?
Say yourself.
Oh? Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No, I think this is a complete embarrassment personally as to us needing to go through this. No one should be limited. It's our job as council people to listen to all members of the public.
Okay.
Exactly. For two minutes.
That doesn't fly.
It's part of our job. We do this once a month. We should, we should be here.
Everybody needs to be able to speak. And the way these meetings operate, there are people who don't speak unless they have to be on the mayor's side. Okay, so we're not going to do that tonight.
There are no sides in democracy.
Anyone is allowed to come to our meetings, Councilwoman Sabari.
Exactly. And speak for two minutes, Billy. Exactly. Thank you.
So look...
Okay. Mario, you want to open it up to people or not?
Yes, Ed, hold on a second. So if anyone from the public has their microphone cut off, just text me, and I'll do the rest of your talking for you.
I'm not, Mayor. I am not going to cut any residents off. I will let Mr. Aversa come.
Oh, you're not going to follow Mr. Aversa's directions?
No, I'm not. And I stated that before. I don't do it when you ask me to. I'm not going to do it with... I don't cut anyone off.
That's good.
Mario, we expect the public to be respectful, too. It's two minutes. That's what they get. Well, I hope they can say what they need to say in two minutes.
The public is always respectful, and sometimes they don't get it.
Well, I hope so. I pray that they will be, and I expect them to be. Thank you.
Okay, so you've made yourself look like an ogre here, so let's go. Anybody?
That's up to you and other people to decide. I'm okay with the way I look.
If anyone wishing to speak, could please raise their hand.
Yeah, Mr. Kepaskas.
Who?
Mr. Kepaskas.
Got it.
Good evening, everybody. Mitch Kepaskas, 251 Alfred. What Ed just said is a pure example of why, for the past two elections, it's been an absolute landslide for the Republicans. The way that the Democratic majority has treated all of the residents in these meetings, like we're some kind of second-class citizens, is just evident in the vote tally that you can see. Pure utter landslide. The residents have spoken two years in a row, clear. We are not dumb. We are not stupid. We have a decision that has to be made. It's been made in the ballot box. As Mr. Aversa said, if you want, you can vote. Well, we did, Ed. And our vote is loud and clear. We are against high-density housing. We are for Englewood Cliffs. We are for our stake in this town. And congratulations to Mr. Ketrubus and Mr. Park. Great campaign. I congratulate you both.
Thank you. All that in under two minutes. That's awesome.
See? It could be done, Mario. I told you.
Yeah, that was well worth it. Thank you, Mitch. Ms. Huang? Ms. Huang?
What page is she on? I don't see her. Oh, I see, I see. I got it.
Actually, I just raised a hand to echo what the neighbor just mentioned. Congratulations to the new elected. And also, I want to say, we voted with our voice clearly, right? So no high density, or at least we should continue to fight. Second one, I also feel like I'm the second-class resident. Like last time, it was limited to five minutes. This time, again, like two minutes. So for someone, like, if speaks slowly or thinking, it's not necessary. Why should we limit to two minutes? Just because it's late? The content matters. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, let me check. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please raise your hand. I'm going through four pages of screens.
McMorro.
I got it?
Third column.
All right, yep. Have it. Good. Please unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Carol McMorro, 49 Summit Street. I'm just going to mirror what everybody else is saying. Mayor and Council, you are elected officials, and you were elected by the town to represent them and to listen to them. And it's disgraceful that you, after having this public sit for 20 minutes because they could not get into this meeting... I'm not faulting anyone for that. I'm just saying, for 20 minutes, I couldn't get in. I kept getting hung up on when we called. Couldn't get into the Zoom. So we wasted 20 minutes there. Then we waited, because you came out of closed session an hour late. So we had to all sit there, not knowing if you were ever coming back or what was going on, but we all waited for you there. And then we have 14 resolutions and three ordinances. And accidentally, when the Borough Clerk uploaded it, it did not upload. So we couldn't even prepare to what we're going to ask. And now you immediately go into the next meeting, and now you cut everybody off for two minutes. This is, it's outrageous. It's outrageous how you treat the public. It's the disrespect that's shown. It just should not be allowed. And you should all be ashamed of yourselves. And it's just disgraceful. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you.
Actually, Mrs. Correa was on, and then Mr. Metta.
Go ahead, Ms. Correa.
Hi, thank you very much. Fran Correa, 16 First Street. I have a question about the DPW position. The question is, is that position being created or changed from part-time to full-time? Because we have... Did someone quit, or...?
No, it's currently a position that is held by a part-timer who has been working full-time because of COVID.
Okay. And that, does that individual hold a license to drive trucks?
A license is not... Well, I'm sorry. To drive a regular truck, yes. Does he have a CDL license? No. Is he in the process of studying for one? Yes. But due to motor vehicles and the delay with COVID, he has not been able to get tested.
Okay. And we have, there's an identified individual for that role, right?
Yes, yes. He works for the borough, and he has been for a couple of years now. So it's not, it's not someone that we just hired. He's been working here for a while, part-time.
And going from part-time to full-time, is that a position that we actually need? I mean, do we have, do we need a new person that will incur benefits, et cetera, as a full-time individual?
It's a position that is in the budget. We didn't hire in the beginning of the year. And the DPW superintendent was in closed session with us and asked if we could please turn this position into full-time. And yes, it's in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I give my 16 seconds back. Into the pot.
Good evening.
That's okay. I think Ed fell asleep.
I'm still here.
Mayor, Mr. Metta had his hand up before?
Yes, Mr. Metta, go ahead. Unmute yourself, please.
Since the, most of the information is posted while we are at the meeting, it's very hard to read it and really ask any questions after understanding it. Its time is too short. And on top of that, we have all this rudeness, and we have all these contested voices. What I find amazing is that when it comes to election time, we have the same people saying, oh, we're going to have an inclusionary town. We're going to build greatness. We're going to have no divisiveness, and we're going to get along. So when it's time to get the votes, oh, we're going to get along very fine. The moment you come in, and basically, you are here in the park, basically, all of a sudden, you're limited to two minutes, five minutes, and it's all this fighting. And everybody needs to stand up to you, Mr. Kranjak, according to the ads which you have seen. Correct? But yet...
I made it to a lawn sign from the other party. It's amazing.
Okay. And then, after this really, really, a so-called bad settlement, which everybody tried to sell us, they still have the audacity to come back and tell us, oh, let's build it, let's have no divisiveness. We sold your future. We're going to make sure that you pay double taxes, but let's be friends again. And then, when we attend this meeting, just to get some knowledge or ask questions, all we face is this barrage of abuse. As Ms. Fen said, yes, some people are slow. How are you supposed... I know, when I was talking, I was cut off last time or previous time in two minutes or five minutes, or whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Metta. That's two minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aversa. Hopefully, this is the last one which will face people like you.
No, you'll have one more, brother.
One more, okay. So one more, one more rule of Hitler. Okay.
One more of the ducks, my friend. One more.
They sold our future, but they also are selling or sold their houses.
Mr. Perino is next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Russell Perino, 220 Fairview Avenue. First, I'll start with, again, another comment about limiting the public speaking to two minutes. I know there's provisions in the Open Public Meeting Act that allows a governing body to limit, reasonable limit on the public's participation in length of time. I don't think two minutes cuts it. So you may be violating the Open Public Meeting Act again, like you did last, last meeting. So I want that to be put on the record, because you cannot, one cannot make educated questions or comments in two minutes. So there's rules that have to be played by... Sorry, Councilperson Aversa. So there's rules that have to be played by, sorry, uh, councilperson or versa. You have to live by them. And it would, it's doing yourself a disservice on a personal level and as a professional, as an elected official. I've never heard, I've been to meetings for many, many years, it's, I can count it in actually more than a decade. I've never heard any mayor of this borough or any council ever limit public participation to two minutes each. Shame on you. And shame on those that supported that resolution. It speaks volumes about who you are and how you behave. Secondly, uh, public service announcement, November 30th, starting at 9:30 a.m., there's going to be two applications put forth before the special hearing officer, uh, by 800 Sylvan Avenue as the applicant regarding their proposed project. They're going to be presenting both a 600-unit plan and a 450-unit plan. The planning board will do its best to defend the borough and to do what we feel is, is appropriate in doing our function. Although we've been defunded by this governing body, we will do our best to protect the, the residents and to offer our unbiased opinions about the project and about the details that are included within that project, including safety, security, et cetera. The public is invited to listen. Uh, the, uh, the means for doing so is posted on the borough website, and I urge those who are interested to, uh, queue in. Uh, and there will be an opportunity for the public to be heard, probably at the end of the hearing, but we're not really sure of that yet. But there will be an opportunity for the public to be heard. So we encourage anyone who's interested in it to please, uh, watch for the, um, November 30th, 9:30 a.m. Lastly, I look forward to working with the new council majority to be sworn in in January. The planning board looks forward to working with the governing body as one, as it should be. We, we have two individual roles that we play, but they should not be in opposite, uh, uh, direction and, and they should be, we should be aligned with the council, doing our job in terms of municipal planning and zoning. Just, and you have your roles to play as well, too. But I, I really look forward to getting back on track and being supported by the governing body versus what's happened in the past several months, actually, since January 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino.
When I, I will finish my thought, Mr. Versa, and you will please keep quiet.
You, you finish your thought.
You deserve, you deserve exactly what you're getting, and that is.
Okay, what is that?
Be quiet until I finish my thought, and then you can stop.
You're way past two minutes.
I will tell you when I finish, Mr. Versa. You've got one more minute, and hopefully you can survive through it. Okay?
It's tough listening to your nonsense. But go ahead, Ross.
And I'll keep on arguing with you until you stop.
Go ahead, Ross. Keep, keep going. Stop whining.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm waiting for your voice to not be heard anymore. It's your disgrace, Mr. Versa.
Okay.
So anyway, just, I will finish my thought. I look forward to working with the governing body in the year forward. I congratulate the victors in the election, and I congratulate those that ran and, and, and did not win. They, they ran a campaign. I know they worked hard. I saw them driving all over the, the town. And, uh, again, they, everyone deserves congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Perrino, just so you know, all towns have time limits. This is not anything to do.
Not two minutes. Not two minutes. Show me one town where it's two minutes, Councilman Versa.
Does it matter what your time is?
It does. It does. Because if you, if you're limited, if you're limited so short, people cannot make their constructive comments that they have to. You show me a community where they're limited to two minutes. I'd love to hear it.
It doesn't matter. It's two minutes. It's still a time limit, Mr. Perrino.
Until December, Ed, then you'll be gone, and then we'll have.
You don't have to like it, Mr. Perrino, but that's the time limit you've got tonight. Have a great evening, Mr. Perrino. You're doing a great job with that planning board.
Good riddance. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone else in the town of Angle Cliff knows that, except for you.
It's okay, Mr. Perrino. You have your opinion, too. It's fine.
And supported by thousands of residents, unlike you.
It's okay, Mr. Perrino. Thank you so much.
Well, you keep on coming back, and I'll keep on responding to you as much as long as I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Perrino. You have a great evening.
You're okay, too, Mr. Condescent.
Okay, uh, Mayor, Ms. Elias is next.
Ms. Duffy, I have the floor. Please wait.
I'm saying Elias is next.
Duffy, please wait.
Letting you know.
Please wait.
Why don't you turn them on?
You're being.
I don't have them off. I just have it where I can't, I'm not seeing.
Yeah, I understand that, but you can, you can.
We can hear you hiding.
Mr. Versa, you're being unfair tonight, more than usual. And it will be nice to see you leave.
I think residents referring to Hitler is a little unfair.
Please let me finish.
And really, an apology is.
Sorry. Ms. Safari, please. Uh, Ms. Perrino, I want to thank you for your leadership on the planning board. Uh, and I'll also thank the other planning board members that I see on this Zoom call as well. I know your, your jobs have been more difficult, uh, than usual in the past year. So I see, uh, Mrs. O'Shea, Ms. McMorro. I'm sorry I'm missing anyone else, but thank you for your service. Um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Elias is next, ma'am.
Oh, yes. Um, I don't see him on my screen, but can you unmute him, please?
He is unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Ye- yes.
Hey, good evening. Elias from Tekeetis, 66 Elm Street. Uh, so as a previous residents have noted, um, we've had two elections in a row now where the, uh, has been heard loud and clear, right? And you almost can't even call these elections. They've really been referendums these past.
Someone's speaking? I can't hear anybody right now. Sorry.
Can you hear me?
No, I, I don't hear, I hear like fuzz.
All right. We can hear you, Mr. Um.
Yep. So these, these past two elections have been more like referendums. Uh, I think we would all agree, the one thing we would all agree on in this town is that we are a single-issue town. And that single issue has been, quite simply, do we fight or do we settle? Right? Uh, now, of course, we settled, uh, the month before this election, uh, which, again, I'm, I'm gonna call it a referendum rather than an election. Now that the people have spoken, right, twice in a row, what is the plan to move forward? What is our plan? Is there a plan to, to, to fight against this? Because the people have clearly stated, uh, two times now, two years in a row, we want to fight. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I think, um, at the risk of, um, getting in trouble with our judge and our, um, series, I'm likely to have to reserve any comment on what we can do going forward. Uh, by the way, one of them who's on this call has already put in an Oprah request, uh, because he's got nothing else to do with himself on a Tuesday night. Uh, so I just saw it come in. Uh, anybody else wishing to be heard?
Mr. De Gregorio is next, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. De Gregorio, go ahead.
One second. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you to the, all the residents that voted for Glenn and myself in the past election. And I'd like to also congratulate Tim and Mark on their victory. Um, we, on the campaign trail, on several streets, we did have some, some pleasant conversations and very civil conversations. I hope that will continue. Um, one question that I have is, and it really is a general question, is if there was no settlement, we would have no control over the zoning. And would that not, uh, having no control over zoning, we would have no control over height, and it would be open season on office buildings, on, uh, those land parcels that are vacant, that people want to build on. We would have multi-unit, uh, housing within the residential community. Um, so what's the alternative? I mean, fight? Yeah, it sounds appealing, but what is it gonna get you in the long run? That's my question. Again, congratulations to the victors. Um, and I wish the whole council, uh, peace and, uh, good discussions and no more demonization. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Uh, let me check, Mayor. Uh, Mrs. O'Shea.
Uh, go ahead, Mrs. O'Shea.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. Um, I would like to also congratulate Tim Catrubes and Mark Park on a very well-run campaign. Um, I did not appreciate the Stop Cranjack signs that, uh, Mr. De Goryo and Mr. Luciano put up. And, um, with all the talk about unity and, you know, looking for a kumbaya moment, uh, I find that the Democratic Council people currently sitting on the council cause more of the disruption at the meetings with interruptions and acting, um, in adverse to the citizens of this town. Um, and I'm looking forward to January, because I think the two Republicans taking a seat and having the two very outspoken Democrats versus an O off is a step in the right direction. Um, now, in regard to, uh, some of the comments that Mrs. Correa mentioned regarding the DPW hire, um, uh, in the past, and I know in the past, because my son applied for a job and he didn't get hired because he did not have a CDL license, and that was a job requirement. So now you're hiring somebody full-time with a pension, with medical and other benefits, because they were working part-time. If they were working part-time, they can continue to work part-time without having the town incur additional costs for medical, which is expensive, and a pension contribution. Okay? Person's still working, same thing, doesn't matter. And they still can't, they still don't have a CDL. So the person is really not appropriate to be hired for the DPW, because it does not meet your past standards and requirements. So I really think that that needs to be reconsidered. Okay? You can have somebody part-time, and you, you'll be ahead of the game financially. You know, uh, Police Chief Witty years ago used to say he'd rather pay overtime than pay, pay for new hires, because the new hires cost you more with all the benefits and pension requirements.
Thank you, Mary. Your time's up. Thank you.
And Ed, I won't be missing you at all. Thank you.
The feeling's mutual, Mary. Don't you worry.
Uh, can I respond to Mrs. O'Shea regarding to PW?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, Mrs. O'Shea, the last few individuals that we hired full-time, it did state in the resolution that they must get within, I don't know if it's six months or eight months, that they must obtain their CDL license. This young man has been studying for it. Unfortunately, with COVID and what's going on with motor vehicles, he has not been able to get the exam. But, um, our last hires that did not have the CDL, it stated that in the, uh, resolution, that they had to go get it. And if they didn't get it, then they would lose their job. So it's on probation.
Okay, so if he does not pass the CDL test, he's, within six months, he loses his job?
Correct, but right now, he can't take the test.
Yeah, but he shouldn't be hired, then. He should not be hired until he has the license. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Chang, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Um, hi, Angela Chen, 22 Sarah Hill Lane. Um, I, my question's towards the bond that are going to be issued. My understanding is, is going to build, um, some units on the Hudson Terrace for affordable housing. Does that mean that a contractor already submit the application and all the cost has been estimated? That's why you guys know the shortfall? And if so, who's the contractor? And when did that person or that company submit the application? I just feel odd that, you know, just one month after you guys made this great, so-called great settlement, this already being, you know, the numbers already out for building those units? So what kind of deal that you guys already secretly reached with these kind of, uh, you know, builders, trying to, you know, maybe your friends or anyone? Just give us more transparency. We want to know more. And we want to know whether you guys just continue to screw us, the residents, again and again, even before you guys are leaving, and you want to do some more damage to us?
So I'll let the finance chair, Ms. Savari, answer that question.
You know what? I would have been more than happy to answer the question, but when it comes of, with allegations of corruption, she can go ahead and figure it out herself, because.
I didn't say corruption.
Very nice.
You said corruption.
She is, she, sitting there, you may not have used the word. You are suggesting that these council members.
Our friends were getting money. Come on, Angela, you know what you're doing.
Give me a break.
But thank you very much for your, your comments. Your time's up. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Are you serious?
Um, Ms. Chang.
Come on, man.
I have, I paid the tax. I have every right to know who's the contractor and when the, the contract was signed. I have every right to know this.
There's no contract signed. Because you know that there is nothing going on here, that everything is being followed properly. So why don't you explain it to Mrs. Chang, instead of you asking me to do that, when you know exactly?
I just wanted to be the first crack at it, because you're the one who got us into this mess.
Yeah.
Mrs. Chang is being completely inappropriate. Mrs. Chang is in.
De Gregorio, you don't have the floor. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Chang, uh, I don't believe, based on what I've seen this evening, that any contractor has been hired. I know there's been some that expressed an interest.
Eleven.
Uh, there's eleven. Thank you, Ms. Savari, even though you didn't want to help us. Uh, so there's eleven that expressed interest. No one's been selected. I think everything else you said is correct. Uh, anybody else wishing to be heard?
Motion to close?
Hold on, we're gonna check.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I thought you did already. That's why.
Let me check. I, I have four pages. Hold on. Nope, Mayor, there's, um, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Motion to close?
Going, going once, going twice. We have a motion to close.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I know we, um, we do lose a lot of people from the public after public portion, so I, I want to wish again, everybody, a happy Thanksgiving if you drop off. Um, and also happy Diwali this weekend, if you observed Diwali. Uh, payment of claims is the next item on the agenda. Um, it's Resolution 20 dash 156. It's for the period from October 15th, 2020, uh, through November 10th, 2020. Uh, the total bill list is $4,727,375.15.
So moved.
Second.
Council. Uh, Councilperson Pharaoh?
It's for the bills, right?
Yes.
Uh, no to the affordable housing lawyers, and yes for everything else.
Savari?
Yes.
Oh? Councilwoman O? I will come back to her.
He's muted.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No to our affordable housing legal bills, yes to the others.
Uh, Council President O, can you hear me?
Probably fell asleep.
Please, Mrs. Mrs. O'Shea, everyone's muted.
Yeah, so let's all stay muted. Um, okay, well, she's, she's absent for that vote.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, but it does pass.
Yes, it does. The bills get paid.
Okay, all right. Uh, here are, um, the resolution section of our agenda. Resolution 157, authorize the mayor to sign the 2019 PBA agreement.
So moved.
Hold on, please. I need a, moved by Councilman Aversa?
Yes, 157.
Is anyone seconding that?
Second.
Second.
Who, uh, who seconded?
Savari.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Welcome back. We couldn't hear you. Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I gladly pass that on to the PBA. They'll be very happy. And to the public, I will tell you that the PBA did give up a lot, and it's a wonderful understanding between the borough and the, the men that protect our town. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, next up is 158, authorize mayor to sign 2020, 2022 snow plowing program.
So moved. Second.
That was Aversa and Woo.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm rolling.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
159, authorize municipal grant for prevention of alcoholism and drug abuse.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Yes.
Savari? Councilwoman Savari?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, 160, specially merked resolution, or end to appropriate. for rent to appropriate funds for servants' liabilities. Close prime.
Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Staying.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
161, acceptance of the 2019 audit.
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Recused.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung? Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
162, approval of sewer rate.
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari? O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mayor, can we put 164 through 170 as one vote? Because they're all affordable housing. People are either going to vote yes or no for all of them, so.
That's fine. Let's do 163 first, and then we'll do that.
Sure, thank you.
163, resolution of continuing support for the New Jersey Department of Transportation, Route 9W, bike pedestrian.
So moved.
Let me just explain what this is to everybody.
That's a good one. Yeah.
So actually, this is something that's needed, and it's been in the works along with the Palisade Interstate Park Commission and the towns going north along 9W where there's a great influx of bicycle riders, which may or may not have noticed, a hundred thousand of them that come across the bridge every weekend. There is a problem moving those bikes through Englewood Cliff because the last time 9W was paved, the striping was shifted to create a center lane, making the shoulder much smaller than it had been and making it more hazardous for bikes and cars in general. So what the New Jersey Department of Transportation is doing, without any cost to the borough, is they're doing a widening program in some parts and a restriping program in others. So basically, to be able to move the bikes through our towns, from Tenerife and Alpine up to the state line in a safer way. So I participated in a call two weeks ago with New Jersey Department of Transportation. They went over their plan in terms of what needed to be done in Englewood Cliff. So it's not going to disrupt anything that we already have. It's just going to make it better for vehicles and bikes alike. And of course, bike riders sometimes become militant, and that's not a good combination when you're trying to share the road with a car.
What exactly are they going to do? Are they widening the bicycle lane or?
What they're going to do is actually cut the curb and make it wider, make the shoulder wider. And then shift it over. So it'll be more room, more space going north and going south. I've been riding, I've been riding for 30 years, 32 years, the same ride up to Nyack and back every Saturday and Sunday all year round. And you could see that there's so many more bike riders now than there had been in years past. So this is a good, and actually, you know, Englewood Cliff in some ways has become kind of like the bicycle capital of the Northeast. We do have not only a lot of bikes coming through, but a lot of bikes stop to have lunch, bike riders stop to have lunch in town. And it's actually very nice, except when they're riding five abreast down Floyd Street, we have to work on that also. So hopefully, I know a lot of bikers come down Floyd or Summit because 9W is hazardous because of the narrow shoulder. So I think as they make the shoulder wider, you'll have more people just go straight down on 9W and not come through town. Okay, so can I have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Counselperson Sabari? I'm sorry, counselperson Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. With their request, resolutions 164 through 170 all relate to the affordable housing matters. And I think we could move them, if you so wish, as a council together. I pretty much oppose anything having to do with paying any of the lawyers or professionals on affordable housing because of the terrible work that they've done. But the council is free to do as it wishes. So if you want, somebody make a motion to group them together and pass them.
So moved. Second.
Okay, hold on one second. I just got to put them all together. Okay, so it starts with 164. Okay. Counselperson Pharaoh?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes, to all.
And Woo?
No to all.
Thank you.
Well, so we're adding to 171. This was the hiring of the part-time DPW employee position and making it into a full-time position.
So, Mayor, I would like to say the name because he is an employee, and we do need his name for the resolution, if that's okay with you?
Sure.
It's Robert McCully. He's been working for the borough since he's been in high school, and he is done with high school. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Well, I did ask to hold this until January, but you want to pass it right now, I'm going to abstain on this.
Okay. Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo? Councilman Woo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 172, this was added after the printed agenda came out. This is to authorize the clerk to advertise for a part-time position in the Finance Department.
So moved.
I need a second. I, if someone can-
Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Same thing. I will-
Okay.
Hold this until January, so I will abstain.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
I agree with Councilman Pharaoh. No.
Okay, thank you.
Our ordinances, the first one is ordinance 20-08. This is an introduction. Is that right, Lizette?
It's an introduction of mayor. So they discussed the special meeting. So I guess this is for November 23rd?
I don't know what they're doing.
Yes, it's November 23rd.
You originally had, yeah, but you originally had December 4th. In the draft, December 9th. So I'm not sure what you're doing.
I'm not sure. You're in the same meeting that I was in, in closed session.
Yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't about this ordinance. That was about 20-10.
Oh, 20-10? Okay.
Ms. Sabari, are you saying that they're all on November 23rd?
No, this is the first reading, and we're going to have a special meeting on the 23rd. It would make sense to do it on the 23rd, don't you think?
Just looking at the original agenda that came out for tonight, it had December 9th. So for me, it doesn't matter if you want to do them all on November 23rd.
Okay.
All right, so introduction of ordinance 20-08, ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation for servants' liabilities.
So moved.
And that'll be public on-
November 23rd. What day is that?
Monday.
Monday? Okay. I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, you know what? November 23rd, it is a Monday. Okay.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yeah, yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Same.
Ordinance 20-09. This is an introduction of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 20-04 entitled, quote, "An ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salary-appointed and elected officers within the borough of Englewood Cliff in the county of Bergen in the state of New Jersey", close quote, "for Office of Emergency Management and Planning Board Secretary." So the public hearing on this will be also November 23rd.
So moved. Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Staying.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Same.
I'm sorry, same or abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Ordinance 20-10, this is an introduction. An ordinance of the borough of Englewood Cliff in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, providing for a contribution toward the construction of affordable housing in the borough and appropriating $1,450,000 therefore, and providing for the issuance of $1,377,500 in bonds or notes of the borough to finance the same.
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Pharaoh?
Abstain.
Sabari?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Aversa?
Brass.
Woo?
I am abstaining for the reason that I've just, as you guys know, always been opposed to the terms of the settlement agreement. And I believe there were conflicts of interest that were ignored.
Okay. And I did it, and I hear, I know it was counselperson Aversa and Sabari, but who moved it?
I, hmm.
I'm-
Yeah, Debbie moved it. I seconded it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we'll put these all on for November 23rd.
The next item on the agenda is the committee and council member report. Does any council member have a report to give?
The only thing I can mention, Mary, was we're working on getting the jackets for the Little League team that made it all the way to the state finals. So that's still in the works. I think we've got a couple of estimates, correct, Lizette?
Yes, two estimates.
Yeah, we're still working on a sign too, to put what all the past, the past teams over the years that have made it that far.
Okay. I'm good with everything you said, but on that sign, no politician.
No politicians, no public officials, just the kids.
All the kids.
Yep, I'm with you on that. And that's it. I'm glad to see we got a PBA agreement, so that's nice to see. Thanks, council, for sticking together on that. I'm sure the boys will be happy to see we all came through for them. So thank you.
Thank you for taking care of that. Old and new business, I'm sorry, is there anybody else with a committee report?
Mayor, I need to start preparing the RFQs and RFPs for next year. I usually send them out in November. I'd like a motion to authorize me to start advertising.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Duffy, before you send it out, can you just run it by me?
Sure.
Okay. This discussion on best practices 2020. Who wants to speak to that?
If there's any questions, we reviewed it, we submitted. The CFO answered his questions, I answered mine. And it seems like we will receive 100% of the funding. Nothing will be held back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That said, I think we're finished unless someone has anything else to add on new business or old business.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.